Rudolph Dasher and Dancer and Prancer and Vixen. Comet and Cupid and Donner and Blitzen. But do you recall the most famous reindeer of all? Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Reindeer.
Had a very shiny nose.
Like a light pole.
And if you ever saw it.
Saw him.
You would even say it glowed.
Like a flashlight.
All of the other reindeer.
Reindeer.
Used to laugh and call him names.
Like Pinocchio.
They never let poor Rudolph.
Rudolph.
Join in any reindeer games.
Like Panoply.
Then one foggy Christmas Eve, Santa came to say.
Oh, oh, oh.
Rudolph with your nose so bright, won't you guide my sleigh tonight? Then all the reindeer loved him.
Loved him.
As they shouted out with glee.
Glee.
Rudolph the red-nosed reindeer.
Reindeer.
You'll go down in history.
Like George Washington.
Dashing through the snow in a one-horse open sleigh. O'er the fields we go, laughing all the way. Bells on bobtails ring, making spirits bright. What fun it is to ride and sing a sleighing song tonight! Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. A day or two ago, I thought I'd take a ride. And soon this fanny bride was seated by my side. The horse was lean and lank, misfortune seemed his lot. He got into a drifted bank and we we got upset. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Now the ground is white, go with while you're young. Take the girls tonight and sing this sleighing song. Just get a bobtail nag to forty-fourish speed. And hitch him to an open sleigh and crack you'll take the lead. Oh, jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. Jingle bells, jingle bells, jingle all the way. Oh, what fun it is to ride in a one-horse open sleigh. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy New Year. Good tidings to you wherever you are. Good tidings for Christmas and a happy New Year. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas. We wish you a merry Christmas and a happy New Year.
Mr. Vogt.
Here.
Mr. Chapman.
Here.
Mr. Farinella.
Here.
Mr. Fianakis.
Mrs. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Pender.
Here.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Here.
Mr. Casio.
Here.
Mr. Fenice.
Here.
In accordance with terms of a sun shovel act, but notice that the meeting was closed in all three buildings, the administration building, verbal clerk's office, public library, three newspapers, and tap into on January eighth, Franklin Court. Please be advised there is no smoking on school grounds, inside or outside at any time. Please silence all electronic devices and pursue the district policy number zero one six seven. Each statement made by our participants shall be limited to three minutes duration, and no participant may speak more than once on the same topic.
Thank you, Mr. Fenice. This evening, we are going to have a performance from our South Plainfield jazz band. And we already opened our, or pre-opening of our meeting, was with our South Plainfield course. I have to tell you, absolutely amazing. If you were fortunate enough to see the performance last night, our students are so talented. So we're going to sit back and enjoy, and this is my favorite meeting of the year. Is Drake in your end?
Ready?
I'm here for tonight. Thank you. You did an amazing job. You were fantastic tonight. Fantastic tonight. Our chorus, we are so lucky to have such talented students in our district. So thank you so much and thanks for coming. This evening, we also are joined by our student representative, Sophia. Sophia Vitabale is actually joining us again this year. Last year, she was the sophomore class president. This year, she's the junior class president. Sophia is an honor roll student who has taken on a rigorous schedule of honors and AP classes. She's also on the academic team. Here was a cool kids, the key club student leaders, the humanitarian club, and a member of both the soccer and lacrosse team. So getting us into your schedule. When you're ready?
Okay, the team Dr. Tancin, this is Melissa, and members of the board of education. My name is Sophia Vitabale, and I'm the junior class president. Here is me on behalf of the high school. I participate in varsity soccer and lacrosse, the academic team, the humanitarian club, the heroes of cool kids at high schools. I would like to thank the jazz band and the chamber choir for performing here tonight with the holiday music they have prepared. The music department also participated in the town street lightning on December first, and lightened the event with holiday music this year. The successful winter concert was yesterday, December tenth. We wish them luck with preparing for the spring concert later this year. The high school held its first day of service meeting last month to discuss the events for the day of service. There will be a follow-up meeting next week on December eighteenth to continue operations. The annual powder puff tournament was held on November nineteenth at the pound. The freshman class won against the sophomore class, and the juniors and seniors ended the game in a tie. These sports continued to the first pep rally of the year on November twenty-first. A free throw competition, underhundred hip hop game, and relay race earned the winner of each game points that will be totaled at the final pep rally at the end of the year to determine a winner of the classes. A wellness fair was held during the lunch period in the cafeteria on November twenty-sixth. Students received different prizes for answering questions about how to better realize in times of stress. Model UN competed at Rutgers and won first place for best delegation at the conference. Eleven of the twenty-three students earned individual awards such as best delegate and outstanding delegation leadership. The academic team competed at their first competition of the season on December sixth at Biotechnology High School. Both teams had lots of fun and were successful in scoring points that prepare us for the next competition in January. The class of twenty twenty-five held a movie night on December sixth of high school in the auditorium. Students watched the Polar Express while enjoying hot chocolate and special desserts from Santa. SATs were offered to students at the high school this past Saturday, December seventh. We wish the students luck on their scores, which will be released later this month. Heroes and cool kids went to Grand School today to talk about resilience and the effects of social media in these extreme classrooms. We asked students about their daily average screen times and how this has affected their homes and school lives. We then taught them how to use resilience to not let social media affect their lives negatively, and how to use different mechanisms to find other ways to stay energetic. The class of twenty twenty-six will be hosting a winter winterland event on December thirteenth. Various holiday crafts and activities will be enjoyed while children decorate cookies and enjoy hot chocolate. The winter sports season has officially begun. All teams have begun preseason tournaments before their regular seasons start shortly. We wish them luck. There will be an early release on December twenty-third to start off winter break. Students will return to school on Thursday, January second, twenty twenty-five. Thank you all for the time and opportunity to update you on the successful events at the high school this month. I hope you all have a happy, healthy, and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, Sophia. To our public atmosphere, as a reminder, we have our holiday shows that are continuing up until the break. Our middle school program is tomorrow evening here at the high school at six thirty. Franklin and Riley schools have their performance at one forty-five. Roosevelt has their performance on the seventeenth at one thirty, and Kennedy on the seventeenth at one forty-five, and Grant has theirs, I'm sorry, it's Grant who has theirs up here on the nineteenth at six thirty. The middle school is tomorrow night in the middle school. Although you had a small taste of the high school chorus and jazz band this evening, as I mentioned, they had an amazing performance last night. So if you didn't get a chance to see it, please look for it on your calendars next year because you really missed something fantastic. As a reminder, we are still going through the reregistration process, and I wanted to remind our South Plainfield community that if you need any type of help in working through the reregistration process, you can reach out to the schools. The guidance counselors would be happy to help you. Please be advised that if your child is in the fourth, seventh, or eleventh grade, you must reregister them so that they can re-enter the school district after the break on January second. It's important that the process, for the process of our school, so that we can ensure that we're educating students who reside in South Plainfield. So as a reminder, please make sure that you have that done before the break. If you haven't reregistered, but you had a child who was in grades two, six, or ten, and you reregistered them before the start of the school year, the system recognizes that, so you do not have to reregister your child. In addition, if you do know somebody in the community that is going through some hard times or needs some additional resources during this holiday time or any time during the school year, you can reach out to your school's guidance counselors, and they will be able to put you in touch with several services that are available either through the borough, through our school, through the county, or the state. So, and please keep in mind that the district does offer free breakfast and lunch to any student who qualifies. All you need to do is fill out an application. They're available online. And again, if you need help with that, we're available through the guidance counselors. As a reminder, as Sophia said, we have a half-day on December twenty-third, and we will start our break, and the students return back to school for a full day on Thursday, January second, twenty twenty-five. Just note that I will continue to write twenty twenty-four until February first, because I do that every year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Please, yeah. Moving on. The presentation of the flag to John Farinella.
Wow, alright.
Normal, but.
Alright, I'll follow you.
Okay.
Mr. President. Okay, this is black. This is for John. He's been a board member for years. For John, this is black. He's been board member for four or five years. And it says, John Farinella, appreciation, rating, well-congratulations, leadership to the children of the school district as a member of the South Plainfield Board of Education, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-four. Thank you. No, I've been working with John for a long time, and one thing that I think is really important is what he brings to the board, and that's a voice of reason. You know, he does a great job in pitching it. I mean, he's, he was a principal, administrator, you know, now he's in the BSA, he's an attorney. So I thank his brain a lot, and I'll probably still continue to do that. But really, I wish you, John, you know, I know you said you might come back for a ad hoc committee. Sure, I'd really be happy to do that, so.
Well, sure.
I mean, since I'm a voice to you.
I know this is, there's a little lot of water in a board meeting, but I just want to say thank you to everyone and for the opportunity to work here in South Plainfield on the Board of Education and help to make your schools better. I think it's actually more like ten years, because I was off for a year. I don't even remember exactly what date is, but it's more like ten years that I had a chance to serve with everyone here. And I like to, I've had to put my keys down a couple of times now, and every time you put your keys down, it's hard, especially when you've been with a quality group of people who really care about a mission that's important and value that mission. And we certainly take, and I certainly believe that in every possible way that that has occurred in terms of a commitment to making our schools the best they can be for all of our students based on what they need in this time, which is different from even five years ago when I was a principal. So I thank all of you for the opportunity, and I look forward to seeing and watching all of the good things that this very talented and skilled group that's here, and all of the caring parents, teachers, and everyone else in this school community are going to continue to persevere, to make sure that every kid that comes through the South Plainfield schools gets a great start in life. Thank you for the opportunity.
Moving on, board member comments on presentations.
I've just, I know that they pretty much all left, but the choir and the jazz band were just phenomenal. I mean, I really enjoyed listening to them. What I think I enjoyed more than just listening to them is watching them enjoy themselves, right? To see them up there, and, you know, obviously on the jazz band, it's a little more difficult to see them smiling while they're playing, but the choir, to watch them smile while they're singing, it was really, it was very enjoyable to play. They enjoy doing it, and I hope they continue doing that on further into life, to continue to enjoy it. Sophia, you killed it again, right? I didn't know after last year if you could come in and one-up yourself what you did. I don't know if you rehearsed that. I don't know if you reread that. I don't know what you did, but you nailed it. That's all I know. So great job. Thanks for coming out again tonight.
Yeah, I thank you, Sophia. I mean, to keep us updated on what's happening in the high school here, and also to echo Doug said, it was a great job by the musicians in both of the music department here. Unfortunately, I missed the concert last night, but I know they did a wonderful job, and just to be here tonight, bring a little bit of Christmas cheer to our usually Monday meetings. It was greatly appreciated, and I hope the Christmas spirit stays with everybody throughout the kind of weeks.
I also want to thank Sophia for providing us with the high school update. You did a great job, and it was extremely informative for us. So thank you so much again, and you really should thank them. So hopefully, you're a junior. You'll be here next year. Great job. And also, I know the jazz band has gone, of course, but they did a wonderful job. They always put us in the holiday sphere, and I agree with Lori. It's my favorite meeting of the year. And to John Farinella, you were always the voice of reason on this board. You know that. Your expertise as an educator and a lawyer have been invaluable to this board. You have been a true asset. You've been a true friend, and you will be sorely rest on this board.
Sophia, a great job. As always, John, good mission. To go to my, to my left, or last, what, four years, five years, time to get in our, in this seat, right? John taught me a lot when I came on board. This is my ninth year, and to echo what they said, he is a voice of reason. He grounded me, because if I came in, I was fired. A lot of things done in certain ways, like they was, yes, it's not always. He taught me a lot, and I appreciate that. He made me a better person for that. Thank you.
Sophia, amazing job on keeping us updated always. I'll say my remarks for John to the end after, exacting all the good stuff after we get to the agenda. But great job to our jazz band and chamber choir tonight for joining us, and last night as well, to everyone, including the orchestra, including everyone involved. I know coming in in September, it can feel like a long journey ahead once you come in, but the winter concerts right around, we zip here to the winter concert. And then the district festival is going to be right up, and then the spring concert, so time flies, but keep up the amazing work. As we can all see, it pays off when you continue to work hard, give your assistance. So amazing job to all of our musicians.
Great job. As soon as, you know, to try to see if I could learn, and this is kind of the favorite meetings we ever had. You know, we'd rather have to keep seeing it going through the rest of this, but we've got some work to do. Sophia, great job, as usual. And, you know, it'd be nice to see you here next, last week, December two. That'd be great. Right now, we're going to be voting executive session. Resolve pursuant to vote in the Public Inaugural Act that will be supposed session at this time to stop confidential matters pertaining to student, yeah, personnel, student, student matters, student matters on every book. There have, for the resolve of that matter discussed in close session shall be made publicly as soon as the need for that shall be resolved. Does that motion?
Second.
Vote for all, please. Just go on. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Go on, go on back to order. Any agenda additions or deletions? Public comments on agenda items? Do you have a motion for approval part of ordinance A and B?
Some move.
Second discussion. Vote for all, please. Mr. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Farinella.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pender.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Mr. Casio.
Yes.
Mr. Fenice. Yes. Next, curriculum and student activities, A through D.
Some move.
Second discussion. Mr. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Farinella.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pender.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Mr. Casio.
Yes.
Mr. Fenice. Yes. The next is, this is the policy. Next is personnel, A through D.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Vote for all. Mr. Vogt.
Yes, abstain on D thirteen. That's my spouse.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Farinella.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pender.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Mr. Casio.
Yes.
Mr. Fenice. Yes. And finance, A through K.
Some move.
Second. Discussion. Vote for all, please. Mr. Vogt.
Yes.
Mr. Chapman.
Yes.
Mr. Farinella.
Yes.
Mrs. Miller.
Yes.
Mr. Pender.
Yes.
Mr. Cecilberg.
Yes.
Casio.
Yes.
Mr. Fenice. Yes. Any public comments? Board member comments?
Yeah, I'd like to, first of all, wish everybody a happy, happy, and healthy holiday season and New Year, and all the great stuff that twenty twenty-five is going to bring to us. John, thank you so much for everything, you know, and, you know, I know I'm being more than duplicative right now, you know, saying what other people have been saying, but I'm going to miss your intelligence and your knowledge and your wisdom and your demeanor, and, you know, always being able to give us, you know, facts that the rest of us wouldn't know, and you do because of your experience and your knowledge and your education. And your value on this board could never be measured, and I couldn't do a good job of putting it into words right now, even if I tried as hard as I could, because you were just such a huge asset, and I personally am going to miss you on this board. The community is going to miss you up here as well, and I want to thank you for everything that you've done and for being a good friend as well.
Yeah, John, thank you. We've talked personally, but, you know, your father was an educator administrator. You came to the school district. You became not only an educator, but administrator in another district, and that expertise and also your law expertise has helped us out immensely and many times, and you're a good friend. And I drive by your house and see you tinkering on the cars.
I do.
Yes. He relaxes by rebuilding a transmission, so kudos for that. Also, I just want to remind everybody again about the Christmas concerts at the other schools. All these students have been working diligently since the beginning of the year to bring these concerts together. They have a wonderful music department that inspires these kids. Also, the hall of fame committee. Also, the Hall of Fame Committee, we're still looking for members. We've extended the deadline for applicants till the end of the year, and the Hall of Fame is kind, kind of nebulous in concept, but I think if the colleges graduates who have gone on to notoriety from this school, it also inspires the current students as to what is possible if you have an education here. And that for the community, it, it gives them a chance to spotlight and encourage the fine students and the traditions here at South Plainfield High School. So other than that, everybody have a happy holiday season, and see you next year.
I just want to congratulate Joanne Ryan and Donna Helgason on their retirement at the end of this month. We're truly grateful and thank them for all the years of service, hard work, and mentorship to the children of South Plainfield. As you begin the next chapter of your lives, I hope you have an enjoyable, fun, relaxing, and healthy retirement. You all deserve it. Next, I want to send my heartfelt sympathies, thoughts, and prayers to the boy of family during this difficult time. Also, words cannot express the deep sorrow at losing one of our South Plainfield children. Deepest heartfelt sympathy, thoughts, and prayers to the family of Isaiah Faro. He left us too soon. As a mom, I can only imagine the pain your family is going through. May you find strength and comfort in the memories and love you have for him. And lastly, I want to wish everyone a magical holiday season with your family and friends, a happy, healthy, and fabulous new year.
Echoing Sharon, it always pains us to, to make these kinds of comments, but our prayers are with the family and friends of Isaiah Faro. Isaiah was a proud graduate of the class of twenty twenty-four from South Plainfield High School, and tragically passed away last month. Also, Robert Boyle, also known as Bob, tragically passed away last month as well. He was a staple in this community, often reading guests as they entered the Pal. Our prayers are with Debbie Megan and the rest of the, of Bob's family and friends. Shifting a little bit to John, we are truly going to miss you and your knowledge and intelligence to this board. I graduated, for those of you that don't know, I graduated with John's daughter, Linda, and I, I, I always knew how smart she was in all of our classes, and I was like, where did she get it from? And, and I truly see that, that her parents instilled that in her, and, and working with John on the board for the past three years, it's, it's been incredible because now, now I know that what he instills in his children, what he commits in, in his children and his work and being on the board, his service. So John, thank you for, for your years of service to the field of education and to this community of South Plainfield. And lastly, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy New Year to everyone. Take care.
John?
I'm just going to say Merry Christmas to everyone, Happy Holidays, and thank you again. And, you know, Happy Holidays, Merry Christmas, and a happy and healthy new year. Do you have a motion for adjournment?
Some move.
Second. I'll take it. All votes? He's adjourned.